Recommendation.
Hey, everybody, we're live.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
Yes, I'd like to second the motion and also give appreciation to the DOT team. Transportation is a huge barrier and a challenge with a lot of the sort of access that we're trying to create for opportunities, and so this certainly means a lot. Look forward to seeing this program implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, colleagues. Any further questions or comments? Okay, and likewise, I also appreciate the opportunity to provide more mobility to our residents, especially along the BRT route. Madam Clerk, you may call the roll.
And on roll, I'm sorry, on motion moved by Councilmember Gallo, seconded by Taylor, to approve item number 11, Councilmember Fife. Gallo.
Fife.
Cobb.
Fife.
Reed.
Fife.
Taylor.
Fife.
Tao.
Fife.
Kaplan.
Fife.
President Bar.
Fife.
Item 11 passes with a vote of eight ayes. The next item is item number 12, which is a resolution authorizing the city administrator to negotiate non-exclusively with the One African American Sports and Entertainment Group, Two Trip Development, Three, The Renaissance Companies, Four, Dave Stewart and Lonnie Murray, and Five Athletic Investment Group LLC regarding the terms of disposition of the city's undivided 50% fee interest in the Alameda County Coliseum complex consisting of various parcels bounded by San Leandro Street, 66 Avenue, Hagenberger Road, and Interstate 88.
Thank you. Let's hear a staff report from the Economic and Workforce Development Department. I believe that's Larry Gallegos. Please go ahead when you're ready.
Yes, Madam President, good evening. Larry Gallegos with the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. Staff recommends that council adopt a resolution authorizing the city administrator to negotiate non-exclusively with all of the previously referenced parties that have been, have submitted unsolicited proposals for the city's 50% undivided fee interest in the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum complex. This would ultimately provide staff the ability to negotiate with the various parties regarding price and terms for the property and would provide the administration an opportunity to brief council in closed session regarding the real estate negotiations going forward involving the property. Just some additional background on this item. So, the city has received various unsolicited letters of interest from a number of interested parties, including the Oakland Athletics, the African American Sports and Entertainment Group, Trip Development, Dave Stewart and Lonnie Murray.
All right, I'm gonna go for this dinner.
In the past, in the past, the city has entered into exclusive negotiating agreements and negotiated term sheets with various master developer teams for development of sports facilities and ancillary development on the property. The primary goal has always been to explore ways to redevelop the Coliseum site and spur economic development in Oakland. Now, just some brief background on each entity. So first, the Oakland A's. The city previously entered into exclusive negotiations with the Oakland A's for the Coliseum complex, but despite their initial interest in the property, the A's have stated their desire to build a new ballpark at the Howard Terminal site. At the same time, the A's have also entered into an agreement with the county for its 50% undivided interest in the Coliseum complex for $85 million in addition to paying for the county's operational costs to run the facility. Also should be noted that the A's currently have a license agreement to play at Ring Central Coliseum and surrounding parking lots until the end of 2024. The next group is the African American Sports and Entertainment Group, or AASEG, which is led by prominent black business leaders such as the founder of AASEG, Ray Bobbitt, local sports agent, Phil Duffy, 360 Total Concept Principal, Shonda Scott, Oakland-based developer and managing partner of Suda, Alan Doanz, and former Oakland city manager, Robert Bob, as well as Loop Capital, which is one of the largest African-owned full services investment banking brokerage, financial advisory, and investment management organizations. The next group is Trip Development, which includes California-based developer, Rick Trip, former executive vice president of the Cleveland Browns and Baltimore Ravens, Jim Bailey, and William Miller of William Miller Associates, an investment strategy and management firm. The Dave Stewart team includes legendary former A's starting pitcher and current sports analyst and commentator on NBC BA area, Dave Stewart, Lonnie Murray, CEO and owner of Sports Management Partners, global design firm, HKS Architects, and Lodge Capital Partners, which provides development, investment, and strategic advisory services on sports and mixed-use projects. And finally, The Renaissance Companies, which is based in Southern California and led by Floyd Kephart. The Renaissance Company is an advisor to private equity financial institutions, investors, and specializes in providing comprehensive, single-source solutions for corporations, institutions, and private equity investors. Again, in closing, in the interest of maintaining transparent, fair, and equitable ongoing negotiations, staff recommends entering on exclusive negotiations with all of the previously referenced parties in order to continue advancing the future disposition of the city's 50% undivided interest in the Coliseum property. This concludes my report, and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos. Vice Mayor Kaplan.
Thank you very much. My first question is to the parliamentarian. I just wanted to confirm, and I believe this is what Barbara Parker intended in our conversation, but I wanted to confirm that approving this item would not prevent the council from having the option to consider pursuing one of the applicants at our July 20 meeting. And I see Councilmember Cobb nodding his head, but I did just want to get the city attorney to confirm that on the record, that if we were to vote yes on this item, that would not in any way take away our option to potentially move forward with one specific applicant at a subsequent meeting.
Through the chair, this is Bijal Patel.
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Kaplan, that is correct.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that clarity, and, and my understanding to the attorney is that you've stated that doing this item would then allow staff to brief the council in closed session on all of the applicants. Is that correct? To the attorney?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, that is also correct. You do need a formal action to authorize negotiations with specified parties in order to then continue discussions in closed session on those negotiations.
Thank you very much for that clarification, and I did want to acknowledge that there has been, you know, a lot of intense expressions around this topic, and I did want to make clear to everyone, of course, many of you already know that I have requested and it has been scheduled to July 20th, that we would have the option to proceed with AASEG, the African American Sports and Entertainment Group. And colleagues, since we're not allowed to talk more than a quorum except at these meetings, I did want to share that several months ago, staff did express that they were not planning to move forward anytime soon with any of the applicants for the Coliseum. And there has been, I think for good reason, a lot of concern with many in East Oakland that the Coliseum would become abandoned and blighted and would not be redeveloped. And so I did agree to meet with any of the applicants who so wished to do so, and I did share with all of them that this is a transit-oriented development site, that it has funding set aside by the Alameda County Transportation Commission. I encouraged them all to meet with community and stakeholders and to reach out to the council member of the district and other interested parties in and around that area, and that I did tell anybody who's been interested for the past several years that I would strongly encourage that they would pursue a WNBA team, women's professional basketball, for the Oakland Arena, which is a well-located site already set up for basketball, and that we have an excellent community that would support a WNBA team and that it could be very successful here. As far as I know, and as the executive director of the JPA, Henry Gardner, has stated to me, only one of the groups did actually approach the JPA for an arena lease for WNBA team, that being the AASEG, and they have also approached various stakeholders, labor partners, community groups, and local business groups. And so I did want to clarify that, as there have been some statements made to the contrary. I thank you all for your consideration, and with the clarification from the attorney that this item today would not remove our ability to consider that option at that time, I will then not object to us doing this item, and I want to thank all of those in the community who've been involved in advocating to make sure the Coliseum site receives a positive and healthy future. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Cobb.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the staff who are bringing this forward. And I, two things I was gonna confirm, Vice Mayor Kaplan already confirmed, so we're clear on that. Thank you, Vice Mayor Kaplan and City Attorney's Office. I, actually, you know, I, I need this to pass so we can have a more detailed briefing in closed session, which is typical of public land, potential sale, and so on. And without this, we could not have that detailed briefing, and I would certainly not vote for anything on the 20th without that. So, this is really a necessary precondition to narrowing down the options, if indeed that is the appropriate thing to do after we hear detailed briefing in closed session. I don't, I don't feel there's a huge rush to select one entity right away, but that can happen if the council wants to do that. I'm just looking forward to getting a briefing on all of the proposals, and maybe we'll be able to narrow it down and give some more direction to staff, or we'll see what happens. So, I'm happy to make a motion to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, thank you. I just want to say I appreciate, certainly, there's been a lot of public comment and outreach to council and heard today from Mrs. Green, who we honor as a phenomenal community pillar, and it's exciting to see the interest that we have in this incredible opportunity to develop the Coliseum, especially having local businesses and local black-owned businesses that are bringing forth their, their vision to help create the real living legacy for generations to come. There are five unsolicited proposals. We've not had an RFP process to really fully lift up particular things that we are looking to scope in that, and so there are a lot of different things for us to consider, and this is a serious deal for all of us, and especially for East Oaklanders who have often felt the weight of facing, yes, that black hole at the site and long feeling shut out of city and county discussions or not being heard or engaged fully, with the opportunity to weigh details and options of matters that are impactful to them that have often led forth with votes cast without their full consideration and their feedback. And so I've not received a full briefing, as it's been stated on all the information as their council member, to review for myself and to engage appropriately with District 7 residents on what can be shared publicly. I agree with Councilmember Cobb. We don't want a rushed deal. We want the best deal in East Oakland. I'm honored to represent over 60,000 residents and business owners as the council member for District 7, and I want to ensure that they are heard through this process. I've committed to them coming into this office that there will be clear communication, there will be a transparent public process that allows them to weigh their options, and they've not yet had that opportunity to do so. And so while we've not provided them that opportunity, we need to look as a council and as a city on how we're going to intentionally engage on outreach strategies for those who we represent to fully consider these proposals. My residents, business owners, have asked to see the details. They want to know what's in the deal. They want to know what we're speaking about. They believe often that we are speaking and seeing and benefiting from information that they have not certainly had access to, and we understand that this is a real estate deal and some of that information would not be available, but we've not done the best job with communicating what they can know to understand, to debunk some of the myths that have been before them or things have not been as accurate. And so I've got a lot to say. I will let the other council members jump in here. I see some other hands raised, but certainly I want to also add that the Coliseum-specific area plan, it was approved several years back, and it certainly has the EIR that's attached to it, and I think this is an opportunity that as we're coming into this part of the proposal consideration, that we also revisit with our community what that plan was and see if that plan is relevant today, as we're not sure yet what will come at that site, if we will have the economic driver of a sports team at this major transit hub, or if we need to be envisioning a broader use that advances a plan with all the strong community-centered development businesses, interests that we talked about. We want deeply affordable housing. We want to see affordable housing components for homeownership. We want to see the jobs plan, the affordable housing agreements. We want to see what's the impact for our small businesses and the opportunity to see real investment, to revitalize our business quarters. There's just a lot that I can say, and I'll end with this for, for now. I may jump back in here, that I have a lot of love for a number of those on the proposal teams from Oakland, and I'm excited that they are at this juncture of having this proposal considered, and I'm also equally committed to ensure that I honor the voice of District 7 residents with a transparent, equitable, and fair process to have all the proposals thoroughly reviewed with this business and community deal.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed.
And I would additionally second the motion that has gone forth.
Noted. Councilmember Taylor.
Yes, thank you. Always hard to follow my sister, Councilmember Reed, because she hits all the points, but I guess what I want to emphasize is similarly, I take to heart my commitment to good government, good decision-making, transparency, high-quality, sort of rigorous decision-making, and I think that in order to do that, we absolutely have to understand everything that's on the table. So, glad that we are going, it looks like we're gonna be moving forward so that we can get full briefings on everything that has come forward, where things are and what the path might be. I do have to say that the AASEG team has a pretty, I will say, they, they're setting the bar pretty high for, for the others, knowing that we have to look into all the other details, and I'll just give an example. We hosted, and Councilmember Reed and I, we participated with a class at Castlemont High School where they have their Sustainable Urban Design Academy, a class of juniors in high school, developed their plan, their vision on what they could do with just a small portion of the Coliseum lot, and we spread that out on our newsletters and social media and everything else. And Ray Bobbitt, who's leading this sort of effort, actually came through to listen to the kids and hear what they thought, what their ideas were, really anchored and grounded to being intentional about engaging community and not just decision-makers like me, like us, but, you know, our young people. That goes a long way for me in terms of what their commitment is, their depth, their engagement, and so I just, I did want to just lift that up, the appreciation for how they are engaging with community, who they are pulling together, how they are doing that, but that doesn't negate the need for us to make sure that we know everything that's going on, how things are moving forward, all the options for Oakland with that. I did have a few questions for staff. One question was, why are the A's included at all, considering they never submitted a proposal? I thought what I heard was that we were going with those who actually submitted a written proposal, but the A's haven't done that, and my understanding is that they actually declined to do so when we invited them. So I'm just curious if you can speak to that. The question around, we haven't done a formal RFP, which means we don't have apples to apples, we've got apples to oranges to pears and bananas, and the way that, you know, structured processes work is that you actually have more of a, an RFP that gives that structure so that you can compare similar proposals and deals. So I'm curious why we aren't moving that direction. And then I also had the question in terms of, when we do exclusive negotiating agreements where there are multiple parties who want to be and want to quote-unquote an ENA, what is the typical process for us evaluating that, and what is the level of detail we have prior to making a selection? I've seen like one-page bullets, and I've seen more sort of robust, kind of like presentations with schematics and drawings and other details, and is there a standard that we have? I know we're not reinventing the wheel, so let's, if you can kind of give that guidance to both me, maybe the colleagues, my colleagues that they're interested, but also the public. And then the last question that I have is related to the, let's see, with respect to the proposals and how we might move forward, hearing Vice Mayor Kaplan, and fully, I'm in full agreement, the goal is to activate this site as quickly as possible so that it creates value for our East Oakland residents, our neighbors, for the city, and just because we sign an ENA doesn't mean that things are gonna move quickly. Going and negotiating with five different parties pretty much ensures that they're not gonna move, is not gonna move quickly. What's the balance? How do we look at this? And then I guess my question is, and what I'm hoping that we can cover in either in closed session or open session the next time we talk, is what are the specific milestone targets so that we know that we're moving forward as quickly as possible to activate the site? Because to, to, to go through this process and, you know, commit to anyone, but have it take another 10 years to get a design and to actually start moving forward is, will be a disservice to our community. So, wanted to ask that question as well. How, how do we ensure that we are making regular, steady progress on activating this site? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gallo, and then I'd like to hear from staff to help respond to those questions. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yes, so thank you, and again, it's to the city staff. On your report, on page two, on the top here where it says Oakland Athletics, this is, "In May 2018 pursuant to Resolution Number 87203, the city council authorized staff to enter into an exclusive negotiations with the Athletics Investment Group LLC, known as the Oakland Athletics regarding the property." Where, what happened to that resolution? Has that ended, and what, what was the outcome? And secondly, my other question will be, considering the other half of the Coliseum, what is the, for the, for the public information, what is the current role of Alameda County with the Oakland Athletics, and what would that be in relationship to the city of Oakland's moving forward with our side of the property? If you can answer that, would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallegos, can you help answer the questions from the council members?
Sure. So, there's a long list there, so you might need to help me out if I miss something, but let's take Councilmember Gallo's questions first. So, in terms of your first question, if I understand it correctly, the, the previous ENA that the city entered into with the, with the A's, that was again to look at the possibility and feasibility of developing their ballpark at the Coliseum site. That deal has already passed and has lapsed. As you know, the Oakland A's have made it known that they want to develop at the Howard Terminal site. So, yes, there was a, a prior ENA on the Coliseum site with the A's and the city, but again, that has, that ENA has lapsed. In terms of your sex, your second question regarding the role of the county and with regards to the A's, so, so if you recall, the A's are making payments to the county in terms of their, their overall payment of the $85 million. So, they technically will continue making their payments for approximately five or six more years until that is fully paid off. Once that's paid off, then the A's will receive the county's ownership interest in the Coliseum. So there is still technically a role in the county, and, and obviously, they're still part of the JPA. If, if that answers those questions, I can maybe try to tackle through the chair, Councilmember Taylor's questions.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Great. So, Eve, one of the first questions was, why the A's, considering that they declined on our previous offers? So, so if you recall, originally, when we had the opportunity to brief council through various closed sessions, the, the time and the arrangement, what it was, was that the A's had responded to our original term sheet that we had provided them, and they did give staff feedback at that time, but they indicated, again, that they would be interested in, in purchasing the city's 50% ownership interest. However, they, they gave several reasons why they were hesitant to respond in writing, one of which was that they also mentioned that they would be interested in entering into a more formal agreement rather than a purchase and sale agreement such as a, a standard ENA/DDA slash DDA type of proposal. So, so that was one of the reasons. Again, there were other issues that they had mentioned, but again, they also indicated, as I previously stated, that they were also more focused on Howard Terminal. So, that doesn't preclude the chance that they may still submit something in the near future, but we didn't want to unnecessarily rule them out, so that was the reason why we included them in this list. In terms of your, I believe there was a question about the RFP process, so, so yes, again, this is one of the reasons why we would like to be able to brief council in closed session to solicit feedback in terms of which direction we should proceed at this time. Again, issuing an RFP is certainly a viable option, if that's the desire of council, we will certainly go ahead and, and move forward in that direction. At least in, in that case, you would still be able to lay out all the requirements and conditions of what a supplemental should include. That way, we'd be able to compare apples to apples versus to apples and oranges like we're currently doing now. I believe there was also a question about what is the ENA process? Again, this, this item this evening is to go ahead and obviously negotiate non-exclusively with the various parties, considering that there's multiple parties interested. If, if the direction from council in the future is to direct staff to negotiate exclusively with one of these parties, eventually, yes, that, that could be the, one of the processes. Again, it's entirely up to council in terms of which direction they would like us to proceed. Again, there's the option of purchase and sale agreement, which is more transactional, where the city would, you know, theoretically sell their 50% ownership share, or versus the more standard traditional model, which is the, the ENA process, the exclusive negotiating agreement process, which, which council knows that this process can take multiple years to go ahead and, and transpire, especially going into the developer disposition and agreement process. As far as the question, I believe there was a question about how would we be able to activate the site as quickly as possible? So, again, just as a reminder, the A's still currently have their, their license agreement to play at the, at the Ring Central Coliseum until the end of 2024. And in addition to the Coliseum, they also control the parking lot, so even if we wanted to activate the site quickly, there's still that, that issue that need to be resolved. Again, if Howard Terminal is delayed for some reason, or if that does not go forward, that could change sort of the complexity of the issues as well. So there's a number of issues that we would need to resolve, but yes, staff is in agreement. We would like to, love to see this site activated as quickly as possible, and, and also, as a reminder, the city does own several, or maybe a half dozen outlying parcels surrounding the Coliseum as well. So, so that's one issue. And then the milestone targets, I, I think the, the way that we would traditionally set this up again is if it was the pleasure of council to direct staff in the future to negotiate exclusively with, let's say, one of these parties, you know, we could, we could go that traditional model and, and enter into an ENA where you would establish, you know, sort of the development schedule and, and, and milestone targets, so there would be a way to go ahead and map that and then be able to set deadlines as far as reaching those targets. So, hopefully that answers most of the questions. If there's any additional clarification, I could still try to take another stab at it.
Through, through the chair, if I may, I just wanted to emphasize one point, that while I know the part of the, what- while I know the part of the, what folks bring up as an argument is that the As still have sort of site control lease through end of 2024, but starting development now, design, planning, et cetera, folks wouldn't be anticipating breaking ground until then anyways. So I, I think that that point is one that when you really look at timing and lining things up, we wouldn't really be looking at doing anything on site, even with an aggressive development plan. So I wouldn't see that slowing us down from sort of aggressively doing the pre-planning, pre-development, all, all this needed there. That's it. Just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kaplan.
Thank you. I don't need to belabor it, as I think Councilman Taylor just said one of the things I was going to say, which is, there's no reason to wait until the day the site is available to start planning, because then you put several more years of delay. And I would also note that the applicant, certainly that I've been talking about the most, already has a proposal for some immediate activation, including with a WNBA team that could operate in the existing arena, even predating any future construction. So there's many ways that site activation could happen. And then lastly, for my colleagues, just as a note of history, I have been urging the bringing of a WNBA team for over six years, as several reporters have recently posted previous video of. So this is not a fly by night thing. And I, I actually think I could just leave it there because I know this action will let us be briefed, and I look forward to all of us working together in good faith. And I would just close by noting that there has been a long history of this city of well-connected white developers being given an immediate path to action without a process. This site has had an extensive process. It's had a surplus land act notification that was a public call for proposals. It had a council briefing on multiple parties last year, though I recognize some of my colleagues weren't here yet, and it's had a specific plan. So there's actually been more process on this site than on many, and, and I look forward to us continuing the conversation in a thoughtful way. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do have a motion and a second from Cobb and Reed. Seeing no further hands in the queue, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
And for item 12, moved by Councilmember Cobb, segmented by Councilmember Reed. On roll, Councilmember Fife. Councilmember Gao.
Aye.
Councilmember Cobb.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Pro Tim Tao.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
President Bass.
Aye.
The motion passes with eight ayes. That takes us to item S13. It is a resolution to modify Philgraph Avenue from 20th Street to 29th Street with an enhanced buffered bike lane.
So I left that meeting, folks. That is it there. So the motion passes, I think it's weak sauce myself, and the city, look, the mayor could simply have put together development teams. And what these new elected officials don't understand, and I think the ones who are most senior among them probably never knew, is it is not against the law for them to favor a developer for a project. So, you know, they don't have to come up with this, oh, well, you know, you have to be fair, like Triva was like, oh, like, you know, I'm, I, oh, we've got this, and oh, the African American Sports Entertainment, but she wants to like really tell, just say she's for the African American Sports Entertainment Group, but she feels like she has to balance it, and you don't. As an elected official, you don't. I went through this with Elihu, Oakland Mayor Elihu Harris, way back in 1994. We were at the fundraiser for Wellington Webb, who was the mayor of Denver, and I had written a column in the Mont Clarion that said that Elihu favored Michael Baines, Baines Robertson, to develop old local housing. And Elihu got, he was actually mad, he did, that I put that out there. And he was coming up to me, why did you do that? Why did you do that? And it was actually Triva's father, Larry Reed, who said, hey, two prominent African American men in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood, and the city should be arguing with each other, right? And I said, I wasn't, I didn't start it, he did. And I just simply explained what I did. And so afterward, I made, did some research and discovered indeed that there were six different items of case law that said that an elected official could name the developer they wanted for a project in California. And I took that to Elihu, okay? So here we are, fast forward to today, and you have the Oakland City Council basically walking on eggshells to avoid saying that they have a favorite developer, and then opening the door to talking to two developers who are white, who happen to be part of our bad past. Now, I understand that Floyd Kephart wants out. I understand that Floyd has relationships with a hedge fund organization. Okay, fine. And he wants to deal with the As, all right, whatever, okay? My point is, the mayor could settle this issue like that and say, I want African American Sports Entertainment Group partner with Dave Stewart, working with the Athletics. End of story. Because look, you're not going to get Floyd because Floyd wants the As to work with him at the Coliseum. That's not happening. On a stadium. Okay? Whereas the Athletics may want to be a partner in something that's complimentary, Dave Cavall on my show said, hey, look, he doesn't feel the NFL football is viable there because the parking requirement and landing would take up. I happen to disagree. I think there's enough room to do NFL football, Coliseum City, the arena, whole nine yards, as they, I would say. But we need to do the hard job of lifting the whole of East Oakland so we get rid of that sea level rise problem. I don't care what anyone says, that is a massive problem, and I can't support anything down there until we meet our maker on this and get religion and say, we're going to solve the sea level rise problem in East Oakland right now. We're going to back $2 billion to do it. Here's a rollout, we're going to start this time, we're going to finish it in time and do it. But, but this council is passive aggressive, it's afraid to make moves, it walks on eggshells, it doesn't understand what it's doing because you have a staff that, that doesn't want to upset them, and there's no leadership. Okay? There's no leadership. And so as far as I'm concerned, hey, look, the Athletics, I'm beginning to think the Athletics would be better off in Vegas because they actually get what they want faster. There is too much contemplating navels in Oakland to get anything done in a reasonably, reasonably timely fashion. I've had it. I've, I've lived with this for 33 years. I don't care what these people think about me at all. This is ridiculous stuff to watch this again and again and again, and everybody get up there and pontificate and all this rather than make a hard decision, not one that says, well, oh, we have the needs of the community and every, we know that. You guys are the council, okay? We have the mayor. But the reason why these things prolong is because your inability to make a hard decision fast collectively. That's the problem. Or at least to call for the mayor to make one. So now you want to do an RFP process after having gone through this? You don't need to do an RFP process. You had Ray. Give the man, yeah, Kevin says, now you see how annoyed I am. Yeah, I do. And it's tiresome. But see, here's the thing, it's taken me decades to get tired of it. I lived it, worked it, reported, blocked, everything, okay? Everything. Save for one thing. So it, this is, it's ridiculous. I have seen Oakland at its worst. I mean, it, it just, I, I have to say, you know, I think it's worth our losing all of our professional sports teams to basically go through the pain of not having them and then figure out the hard way how to rebuild our, our sports infrastructure moving forward. But I can't stand Oakland this way. I mean, I love my city, but the leaders, and these are people that I personally know, are disappointing. There is no excuse for this. And once again, it's like this group that's, well, we've got this. You all don't got this, okay? You don't got it. You don't got it. You have people out there homeless counting on you to make decisions, and you guys, you do it at a snail's pace. Toot sweet. Okay? The theme of tonight is getting to yes. Can Oakland ever get to yes on anything? And what bothers me is that it doesn't matter how we go, you can swap one person out for another person out in terms of the city council, but the city's overall DNA affects the person that is the elected official, and so we wind up getting the same ridiculous stuff over and over again. It's time to go back to the council manager form of government to forget strong mayor. It's not working. It's causing too much instability along with ranked choice voting. Ranked choice voting, I understand, but look, strong mayor's got to go because that's the only way we'll get a city that's actually ran by a professional group. Right now, we've got the mob. We've got a mob mentality that jerks this way and that, and ultimately makes no decision and winds up with people arguing among themselves and putting stuff on social media, which is destructive to begin with, and nothing effectively happens fast. So what happens? People leave. They leave Oakland because Oakland is bereft of leadership. And this pains me to my heart to say this. Okay? It just does. All right, subscribe to 9062 and bookmark OaklandNewsNow.com. That ends this broadcast.